Turn my rings over to Josh.
Big big control.
Night.
I'm here, everybody.
Hey.
Hi.
Dr. Long, three point four, I have some, I wanna make sure I say some stuff of stuff's going on at the elementary school when you're done talking.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We're live. We ready to start? Ready for my man? Everyone ready?
Ready.
Okay. So we're gonna call the meeting to order and do roll call.
Mark Carlton.
Ronnie Freeman.
Dan Murphy.
Katie Missfeld.
Aaron Mormon.
Dan for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which extends one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Is our agenda staying out there?
I like this agenda.
Okay, perfect. We have to approve the agenda as stands.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as it is?
I'll make the motion. Prove the agenda as is.
My second, I'm motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does anybody have any corrections with the meeting minutes for December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two?
I do not.
I'm good neither. Aaron, are you with us?
I have no questions.
So I motion to approve the meeting minutes for December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second my motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're at three point O and three point one is school board recognition month.
Yes, this January is the month where public schools across the state set aside time to thank our highly paid school board directors. For for your volunteer work and for your leadership. And we have a proclamation that was forwarded to us from OSBA and we would like to read it to you all, so just bask in the recognition, okay? Here we go, ready?
Yep.
Okay. Proclamation. Whereas school boards create a vision for what students should know and be able to do.
Whereas school boards establish clear standards for student performance.
Whereas school boards ensure that students' assessments are tied to established standards.
Whereas school boards are accountable to the community for operating schools that support student achievement.
Whereas school boards align school district resources to ensure that students meet standards.
Whereas school boards create a climate that supports the philosophy that all children can learn at high levels.
And I'm going to pause to let you see that our new business manager read the statement about resources. Whereas school boards build collaborative relationships based on trust, teamwork, and shared accountability and.
Whereas school boards are committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement.
Now, therefore, we hereby declare our appreciation to members of the Butte Falls School District School Board and proclaim the month of January to be school board recognition month.
Yay.
Thank you all very much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
There might be a little chocolate at your place, too.
I see that. Okay, three point two, Butte Falls Charter School Natural Resource Center update, Mr. DeCarlo.
Looking for it. Good evening, school board. So I wanted to come back to you in January, so. Several new things to kind of look at for the natural resource center, the reports being sent around and Erin, I think Julie said she'll be emailing it to you, so you can be looking for that here shortly. So wanted to start out by talking about the week before winter break, I attended the ONREPS or Oregon Natural Resources Education Program Fall Conference and learned about different offerings in the term in terms of natural resources for schools statewide. Also an opportunity to learn and it was something that I didn't realize going into the conference that there's now a CTE strand or thread that is centered on natural resources. So there's been ones for shop classes, there's been one for different areas, but natural resources are the relatively new area that the state's still kind of rolling out some different framework. But what was exciting for me to see at this conference was the fact that what we're doing at the Natural Resource Center anyway fits in line with what a lot of schools are looking at trying to be able to offer to larger populations. And so I was able to do some networking, talking to other schools about just seeing where they're at, they can kind of understand where we're at. And so then that also led me to while at the conference because some of the people there were from Oregon State and so we were able to place the Natural Resource Center as an official outdoor school provider with the state. And so Oregon State is the gatekeeper, if you will, for the state, for the state outdoor school programs. So that means that other school districts that are interested in what we are providing are able to come up and we're actually able to if those schools are willing to go through and meet with the certain requirements, we're able to be receiving state monies for that. Now, I don't anticipate that happening in the near term and see that being kind of a long-term thing, but it is something that's nice to have that opportunity. So before I go on to talking about the couple of things, see a couple of people writing down sort of questions, thoughts? I'm just making notes.
What what's a CTE?
CTE is career technical education. So in order to graduate, students have to do some offering within a CTE set of courses and it can either be just standalone CTE classes or in bigger schools they can choose from several different CTE offerings. And so some of the bigger schools in the Portland area, natural resources is one of the areas. So they could take shop classes or natural resources classes or cooking classes. And so it was kind of interesting, there are several of us from smaller schools talking about we don't have the offerings to be able to offer all of that at the depth that bigger schools do, but if we can focus on natural resources, that's gonna be better suiting what our students are, what our mission and vision are for the school.
That's cool.
Yeah, it was exciting. Also exciting for me was the Makerspace Room. So you see a couple of pictures on there of the Makerspace Room, which is at the far end of the Hatch House. So over winter break, I spent about three and a half days up there completely reimagining the space that we were able to get some grant funding for some different materials as well as if you see in the back of the picture on the left. So there are six big gorilla racks there and so there was some funding to be able to pay for the racks themselves and the storage containers, but all of the material costs less than a hundred dollars because almost all of it is in fact recycled materials. And so my wife would tell you, it's just because I collect that stuff anyway, and I do, but it's also all useful things for students to be able to build and make. And so as I say on there, there are materials ranging from bottle caps to scrap lumber to pulleys to paper sacks. And so the idea is it fits in with what we're doing out at the Natural Resource Center of being wise about our resources. Most of the materials there would be otherwise getting either thrown away or very little of it would be able to be recycled. So this is a way of being able to recycle it. As I say, there's also many toolkits. We actually have safer hot glue guns that we had a couple before, but now we actually have an army of ten hot glue guns that are far safer for elementary students to be using as well as all kinds of color medium markers, paints, et cetera. So in the pictures at the left is third and fourth grade was out there and they were working on plaster casts for fossils. And on the right is a picture from last Friday when we had the sixth and seventh graders out there. And so you can see there in the near ground, they got truly random materials, paper towel rolls, some foam, some bottle caps, a couple of wood scraps and a bunch of plastic forks that I scrounged from the concession stand that we couldn't be using to serve food with. And the students had to in about five minutes put that together to be creating something to go collect golf balls from around the Natural Resource Center. And so it's something that the kids have a lot of fun with. And like I say, it's a good use of all those different materials. So that space is now all set up so we can continue to use it kindergarten through twelfth grade. And it also fits in with what we're doing in terms of science curriculum at the high school level. So part of my push to get that done was because now I knew in January all the high school classes will be out there using it for different projects they're building. Most exciting, probably the eighth graders will be starting this week on creating roller coasters out of pipe insulation and all the random materials to learn about kinetic and potential energy. So I'm definitely excited to see what they come up with for that. The last piece I have that I wanted to touch on for the report is garden planning. So last week I was able to help facilitate a meeting between Ms. McKenzie from the high school, Ms. Brown from the high school, Ms. Ely from the elementary school, sixth grade teacher, as well as one of the assistants from the elementary school, and we were able to kind of map out a way forward to be able to use the garden space again out at the Natural Resource Center. And so right now it sounds like sixth grade is gonna kind of take the lead on preparing that as well as Ms. McKenzie for elective classes, being able to get the garden worked back into shape over the next quarter so that after spring break, we can do some planting. And one of the things that I'm really leaning on this group with garden is really being able to demonstrate our inclusive model, being able to have teachers and staff from across the school being able to use it and being able to facilitate how we can organize it so that everyone's able to be out there, or at least all the different groups that are of interest. So just thought I would share that that's kind of where we're at. There any other questions I can answer for this?
I'm thinking about the teacher involvement piece, so. I'll connect with you on that.
Absolutely.
Or parent.
Yep, we're always looking to be able to, yep, circle back that we'll have in the springtime, another day of work out there. The parents can be helping. And there's also several other opportunities for interested people to be involved. If you out there in the internet are interested, you can reach out to the school or you can send an email to NRC at buttefalls.k twelve dot O R dot U S. And I can definitely get you organized to be able to help out. So anyways, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
It's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. I would note that if you were to go out to the large hatchery building right now, as Rachel noted on her visit today, it all that timber, all those logs that we had milled are now is but sticks around at the level mall and they're inside there and they'll be drying and curing over the next six to twelve months. So we'll have some timbers that we can use for some additional projects to.
Good deal.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, three point three superintendent report updates, Dr. Long.
Yes, first of all, in your packet, you have a copy of our enrollment and I believe we ended December at one ninety-three, which was up a little bit from where we were in November. We have had some ins and outs since then because the Christmas break is a many times a transition time for families as they're relocating even to other communities. And we have some new students, but we also have some students who are exiting. So we're monitoring that. We'll see where we end up in January as far as our target moving towards making sure we meet our budget. I just want you to be aware of that. Other things. Had a the opportunity to attend a meeting last Monday night, I believe it was at at the new and improved Phoenix High School in Phoenix, Oregon. And it was sponsored by, actually, I believe it was some school board members in the region working with OSBA to bring together our local, our regional legislators. So we had Senator Golden and three representatives there. And then districts that wanted to come and share three minutes to get our first, what's important to us to the legislators were given an opportunity to speak. And I'd say about two thirds of the school districts, I think RCC and the ESD all shared different things around funding. We were a little further than about halfway down the list, which is really nice because, you know, people share certain things and then you get to make sure that you emphasize things that didn't get said. I did by chance happen to have a copy of our wonderful Butte Falls brochure that happened to end up in the hands of every legislator because they need to know what a rural school looks like. And I think when I had my three minutes and I only took two point seven five of them because, you know, you don't want to go over. What I really emphasized were things that I've heard this board say, concerns about stable funding, about local control, about recognizing the challenges that face rural and remote communities. There's some commonalities with larger communities, but there are some other challenges by being so remote that you run into issues of attracting students, attracting staff, getting when you need something, actually getting it delivered out there on time and and that it would be really important for rural communities across our state, which, you know, is really kind of outside the the Alamo Valley to to be able to count on stable funding that helps us maintain the level of investment the state has been doing. And so that's not only the state school fund to making sure that it contains what we need for roll-up costs. But also the the Student Investment Act funding, which they said it's on top of that, they said they continue, but it is one of those things that has to be renewed every every biennium. And then other investments in high school success that go alongside that. We've been really effective as a school district in sort of braiding all those grant funds to maximize what happens for our community, for our school, our community school here. But the the reality is this last year, Oregon dropped about thirty thousand students overall. And I know hearing some people in the legislature talk, it was like, well, then we need to reduce our funding or adjust it, you know, right size it as it were. But the the problem is is that the cost for maintaining our programs and and attracting teachers, which, you know, right now we're losing teachers to other states, certainly to other communities that can pay higher. We need, we need to maintain the resources that would that would continue that investment. So what basically what I really advocated was that that they not cut funding, that they invest in the roll-up cost to maintain those investments and that they recognize that that small communities need flexibility and how they use their resources. So that that local control decision-making piece is really important. I know to this board and to other rural districts that, you know, have communicated with us over the last two years or so. Very well received, had a chance to chat with people afterwards. And I do think that the programs that this board has helped us develop, that we can actually document and in our literature made a really favorable impression. There were several other school districts that were curious about our Natural Resource Center. And I think some other visitors will come out of that. That is one of our best ways to recruit teachers, by the way, up here, because that there are two people out there who aren't necessarily thinking, I want a thirty-year career working for this district. They're actually thinking I want to grow as a teacher, I want to go somewhere where what I do fits who I am and what I value. And if you can find people who see the investment in natural resources as valuable, then when you have a place like the Natural Resource Center that that's, you know, tangible, it is impressive. We we were able to, we attracted one of our teachers last year because of our open house. She came on reconnaissance. Yeah.
I like it. This is one of one of the reasons why.
Right. And so so I I appreciate that we have that asset, but in that there is, there are things that we're going to have to continue to develop out there that are probably going to require some other partners because I don't think that the funding for what it needs to be can happen just through our state school fund. We and there are some partners out there who've expressed interests. We developed this more. I think the getting approval to be a an outdoor school, a day school is pretty big because that is not only the potential for some revenue, but for some grants on infrastructure, which then allows funding outside our regular funds to to help pay for those costs. So that was, that was actually a lot of fun. And I got to see some people I don't for a while. It was starting to fill my ears when I when I see a former student now superintendent of one of the large districts in the region. I know, it's like kind of sobering. But 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 a lot of good work going every, we we should be proud of our region. There's a lot of good things going on in this region with our community college. And by the way, you might have noticed there's a slight subtle change in the decor in here. I mean, up here is a little osprey sign for a row community college. I mentioned to you that before Christmas, I was able to go spend about an hour with with the president of RCC. And there are several asks I had of him and one of them I laughed and I said, and I really want a whole bunch of your penance because our kids need to know that RCC is there and they can count on it. And he hand-delivered me about fifteen of the pennants, which if you know how hard it is to get pennants out of colleges for schools, because it like everyone wants them and they charge, want to charge money, he just handed them to me. So Randy, Dr. Randy Weber is his name, and that was a great follow-up. So if he could deliver on the pennants, then I think I'll hold him some of those other things. Other things that happened last Friday, we we recognize that when we hold Friday school, but that's not the habit of our families. And so if you have watched any of my communications, you know, I was really out there saying like it's Friday planned for and all that. And so there were some additional fun things that happened at the campuses at the high school. We branded it French Friday. And we, our teachers got together and and put a whole bunch of funny, interesting ways of using French in their lessons and some other puzzles. And then participation throughout the day, students were able to get raffle tickets and we had a raffle at the very end of the day. And twenty-five percent of our students got piping hot salty french fries from the Butte Falls Cafe. And so French Friday was ended with a bang. We also threw some connections by making a good hire for a principal at our school. Were able to get the Eagle Point Jazz Band to come up and do a mini concert at the elementary school and a mini concert at the high school. I am so proud of our students and that we don't have a lot of guests. We haven't had a lot of guests come in in the last few years. But they, our kids were very really respectful audience members and and actually very appreciative. The only part I'm dreading is I know the security camera was on the stands and that our staff, including me, were trying to remember how to do the motions to YMCA. And I I'm dyslexic or something, I'm not sure. So I'm hoping that that tape gets erased very quickly. But we had a lot of fun and the kids, a number of them came to talk to me afterwards and they want to have other type concert, things like that. They suggested maybe a rock and roll group. And I suggested that they form their own. So we may have, we may have some students who take me up on that and and I will make sure you get invited to that concert. Trying to think what, oh, there is one other thing. I'm gonna just talk about it here because it was mentioned in our last board meeting. And it's, it's, it's can be kind of sensitive for people until you realize that will help you get through it. But all school boards in Oregon are now, the school board members are now required to complete a statement of economic in impact or something like interest, statement of economic interest. And really what it's getting at is that you don't have any conflicts of interest as you serve for the board. Or if you do, or your immediate family members do, that you declare that. Because it is okay to have a conflict of interest. You just have to declare it and not let it impact your decision-making. But in Oregon, there's some pretty strict rules around that. And so Julie mentioned to you that we would be getting you more information. Well, one of the things is they'll be sending you some information to your email. And I need, this is the part I need to tell you, it's to your district email. And you all do have a district email address. It doesn't always get used with the same frequency. And so if I just elevated your blood pressure here, please know we are here to help you access your district email address. And in fact, if you need help getting it directed to your phone device, if you take your emails on there, we will find a way to make sure you can do that, too. I would encourage you to use your district email address for any district business. Because that is a public communication. And the challenge is if you use your private email address and then there was some issue that were where some author authority needed to look at emails and they wanted to scoop it up. They have access then into your private email and that's not what you signed on for. Yes, they, yeah, and and you know, you you've seen what's happened at the national level around emails. Well, I don't want Butte Falls School Board members to be the the next hot, you know, New York kind story. No. I want you to be safe. There is risk when when people have access through public document requests to our personal email. There may be things in there about people that because it's a private communication that's personal, has nothing to do with the district, and I would not want that you to be in awkward position. So if I raised your level of concern enough, please know Julie and I and Catherine are here to help reduce your level of concern because we're gonna keep this safe. And your your district email will be something like mine, which is your first initial and then your last name and then at you, see, I'm getting all choked up over it, at Butte Falls. Which is one word, dot K one two dot O R dot U S. It already exists, but if you haven't activated or if we somehow changed the password on you, we need to get you in there and we'll help you get to safety. That will then get you the, that is the email address, my understanding, the state's gonna use to send you the stuff for your statement of economic interest, which is a document that you must tend to. And I can help you do that piece, too. So.
Basically sign out, right?
You have to answer some questions, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gonna ask you questions about your, if your significant other and immediate relatives, and if they have businesses that do business with the school and, you know, things like that. And or, you know, and like getting that, are there going to be contracts that would come before you that you might have an interest in, or are there collective bargaining agreements that are being bargained that you might have an interest in either directly or indirectly? And it's not, it's, it's okay to have those if you declare them. But if you have them and you don't declare them, that's where it could get dicey for you. So just want to keep you all safe. And I'm thinking, I'm looking here real quick. Thinking that's enough talk at this point. And I think the next thing I'm actually going to defer to Mrs. Bray on the number three point four.
Okay.
We're just jumping to three point four. Three point four, okay, we can do that. All right, awesome. Okay, so I just want to give you updates of stuff that's going on at the elementary school. We got four new kids. Kinder, third, fourth, and sixth. Sounds great. To replace some of the kids that had moved to other places. So it's keeping our numbers kind of steady. We rescheduled our winter concert because of all the illness. It's not, I didn't want to do that, but so many people were sick, it just didn't it wasn't gonna work. So we're doing that this Wednesday at six thirty and seven thirty at the elementary gym. This, also this Thursday is middle school dance, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders from six to nine. So that will be interesting and fun.
It's our first middle school dance in like four or five years.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo.
Yes.
I'm chaperoning, too.
Yeah, there'll, there'll be a lot of us there. It's gonna be exciting. We're probably gonna have more than one kids. With the, like, Dr. Long said, on Friday, we did, we didn't have a theme, but we had our student of the month assembly, we had the Eagle Point Jazz come, and then with middle school, we did a thing where the seventh graders got to go down to the NRC and do all the stuff with Mr. DeCarlo. Sixth grade went with Ms. Ely and the landing was kind enough to have a bunch of formal wear for the kids to try on dresses and shirts and get all prepared for the dance. So they went and did that and got some fancy schmancy clothes. So that was really, really awesome. So they should be looking really good for those that needed some clothes. So that was great. So that's what we did on Friday. What else? So that's kind of what's coming up in the near future. Julie will talk about some parent engagement stuff. We've got more things coming in the next couple of months for activities, parent engagement activities and all kinds of different stuff that we're trying to get going back to school, doing some fun activities. So that's just what I wanted to go over.
Thank you, Ms. Bray.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are at three point five review of payments of bills. I didn't have any questions. Anyone else have questions about the bills?
Dan had given me a list prior to the meeting, so I have those to go over, but I wanted to check in with everybody else to see if they had any before I went over the ones that he had given us.
I don't have any.
I'm good. Erin?
I don't have any.
On page one, he asked, Dan had asked about the century length, the five cents, how that was paid if we wrote a check for that or in or if we paid it online. Um how that was paid if we wrote a check for that or in or if we paid it online. We actually pay that one online, so it doesn't cost but just a few seconds of time. To make a payment for five cents and that's for long distance. It charges anywhere from three to seven cents a month. So um the dollar amount is not unusual um and is consistent with what we've had for. Well, Sam on seven years, almost eight, so it's been that long that it's been there, so. Uh the next one is also on page one towards the bottom of the page. It's for the driver and motor vehicles. Uh those are for driving records for um any new drivers or substitute drivers that we've had um apply. Uh yeah.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yes, the twelve dollar, sorry. And the next one is on page two, about halfway down the page for Johnson Controls. Um an amount of one thousand six sixty-three sixty-two. Um this is the final payment, I believe, of the contract for Johnson Controls um who used to do our security. Uh we now go through Viannet. Um we tried to get out of this contract um to get a refund for it. But it has become very entangled and it was gonna cost more than it was to make the payments to finish out the contract. Um so we elected to finish paying out the contract. Um and then this was the final payment for that, so we are done with them and now we are solely on to Viannet. Who is, I believe, more local um and has, I can tell you they're doing a heck of a job because I have been contacted. Um multiple times um for various alarms that have gone off. And then I have to start making phone calls because I'm like, um I'm three hours away. Hold on, let me see what I can find out. So I do know that it's working.
And part of that is, is we now have staff in place that we can have people who are a little closer, maybe even someone who lives across the street from the school. I also be getting those calls at one thirty in the morning, so.
And I don't mind the calls, it's just a little harder for me to like, well, let me go look out the window or.
And I'll tell you what I have done is because of our camera system, I'm able to go on and check the cameras. And 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 really, I don't, there hasn't been anything that has been a break in at this point. It's been some quirky things with the wind and stuff, it'll agitate some of the sensors on the doors and things like that.
Or an admin member putting the wrong code in.
Okay, but just remember, January ninth, twenty twenty-three, that was your moment. We all have the moment. Okay, keep going.
Uh the next one is a couple down from that for the Oregon Department of Revenue um for two hundred and forty dollars. Um that is a hazmat fee that we have to pay every year. It's for uh materials and things that we have on site, um paint. Um and various things for the buses. Um it's just a hazmat fee that we've had to pay um to the Department of Revenue.
And that's once a year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Uh page four, uh third one down is creative building. Um this was to finish some punch list items at the NRC. Um I'm sure that um Mr. DiCarlo and Dr. Long can. Um detail that a little bit more, but I, that's the overall was punch list items. And the one underneath that for Jeff Heath Concrete. Um was also at the NRC and that was concrete for the public bathrooms that are going in. I believe that that's what that concrete was for.
And those.
Out of the NRC.
At the NRC, yes.
Yeah, and the creative building, um as we went through the transition, um and and our previous uh project manager stepped away for a while. There were a number of things that he would be finished up before I feel comfortable having kids back in there. So. Um Ben was able to work with some of his contacts to get several. People who were able, who who came in and did very specialized things to get our our facilities, particularly the two houses where we have classrooms up to speed. So um and you all know, it's been crazy trying to get anyone to help in the last three years, so grateful to have that done. I I would note, um we also did have a local resident, um Ron um Tilly. Is that right? Am I saying that right?
Yes, you are.
Um who came and patched our roof on our rental and helped us out.
At the NRC?
At the NRC. So he just, we had, we had water kind of coming in and there was, I kind of got a tarp and a bucket up there, but didn't think that was what we really should be having. And he heard about it and he and Keith came over and took care of that on the day, uh before Christmas and uh. And our renter is very happy too.
Awesome.
I love that. Oh, I I I lied, I do have a question then. Would that then eliminate the ninety-five dollar porta potties?
It will, once the bathrooms are up and functional, yes. Um until they are up and functional, um the porta potties will still be out there.
Right above that one's the Pacific Power for nine hundred nineteen dollars. Is that, is that for one month?
Yes.
Is that normal down there?
For the NRC?
Um I would have to go back and look. Um it's not one that I regularly monitor. Um my AP person would monitor that. She's really good about seeing any very large swings. Um uh I would say yes, but I can definitely look a little bit further to see if that is, if that is the case.
I saw the school one was like twenty-two hundred and that's been consistent month after month.
We we heat our schools, the things all. Our, all our buildings down there are on heat pumps or.
Right.
So it it's all like.
And it could be, they're doing culinary down there right now, so they're using stuff in one building all the time.
It it will go down uh you know, more that when they're.
Whether.
Working outside and doing things versus.
There's like three or four buildings, or five buildings being needed. There's three, the residents on two.
I guess that's the scene.
I I'm.
Like three houses.
Okay.
Increase in Pacific Power, so that may go up next.
Oh, that's where my bill is Ohio, I was wondering. So a couple classrooms out there, I know we're using the culinary.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are right now, they're doing culinary.
So it it did significantly increase in December. Uh well, it went. It it was, it was running about two hundred dollars in the summer.
Yeah.
And then you could see it start to gradually go up. So October it went up, November it went up, then December it went up. So so. It would be consistent with the weather and and the activities that are happening down there. Um because you are having more students inside of the buildings versus working outside the building, so yes.
But it is just those two classroom houses and the the residence.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, I will also put a bug in Lisa's ear just to monitor that a little bit to to see if there's any significant more swings.
Hopefully the residents' rent covers.
Does he pay that separately?
Yeah, we we might pay it and then bill him or it's not.
I I actually think he may get billed on him. We provide the water, the part of his rent includes helping pay for the water charge.
Yeah, it it doesn't include uh.
Electricity.
Electricity.
Yeah.
That's his separate, or that is that person's separate.
Thank you.
Okay. And then the last thing was on page five, um. He, Dan just wanted a a status on the elementary seismic. Um so I can give you the status as far as dollar wise, and then um I'll let Dr. Long elaborate on the the physical component of it. So out of the two point, almost five million dollars, we have just shy of three hundred thousand dollars left. And I believe that there's only one more invoice that remains to be paid. Um that we are just waiting for the last few punch item lists to be taken care of. I don't know how much that bill is going to be, but I have three hundred thousand that will cover that.
I believe it will be expended out. That money does not stay with us. If there's any leftover, it goes back to the state.
Correct. Um I was more concerned that they, of them staying within budget, not going over budget. Based on how the contracts all rolled out, it can't be any more than what I have. Uh without them coming to us and and having the change order. Um so as far as I know, it won't cost us any more than what we have left in the grant. Um.
I saw them working on the roof today. It's still the same project.
Yes.
I would assume.
I think they're doing the metal cap around the outside of it. We still have one, one downspout that they didn't get that needs to be done.
Okay.
And um there's a, there's, there's a list of things that they're tending to, but they're getting pretty close. We had some water damage on one door to a classroom. They had someone. Take one of our other doors from the gym and rebuild it and replace it. So there's one green door on the north side now, we'll get that painted out. Um and then the other thing on that, on page five down at the bottom is the the district project is in that too. And there uh they don't have the same timeline for that as for the seismic. The seismic really is supposed to be done by December thirty-first. With an opportunity to close out a few things. But um we are, we have a punch list for this too. We're just trying to get the seismic piece done so we can make sure we get all our reimbursements.
Yes. Why is it worded building access?
It's the coding code that O V D uses.
It's it's just the improvement.
Yeah, it's it's, if if you look at the program and budgeting accounting manual. Uh it's it's under a five twenty, so that's what it's called. And if you were to read it, it's. Improvements to the building. You basically have improvements to the building, which is a five twenty, five forty is everything but the building. So it it's just how they word it.
Got it.
Great, thank you. For that question, if in our new budget under capital projects, we have about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And I was wondering if that part of the. Uh elementary retrofit or is this something different?
Yes, yes. In the budget component that you're referring to, yes, both projects equal that six hundred thousand dollars. Yes. Um so that's all I have for the review of the payments, so would you want me to keep going?
Please.
Okay, so three point six, which is the the fiscal component, fiscal summary, financial summary. Um. Everybody that already knows, this is Josh. Joshua is um going to be taking my place, so for everybody out in the world. Um Erin, you can't see him because the way he's sitting, but Erin, he is here, he is a life body.
I could see his blue, I could see his blue shirt.
Yes. Um I did take uh Josh around to meet um basically our main people that we talked to and and gave him a lay of the land. Um I just have to commend all of the whole district. That NRC is amazing compared to seven years ago when I came and stepped in. I I was blown away at how amazing and how much. Is down there and the potential that the students have. It, I was blown away by that today, so. Kudos to all of you um out here at the district that have done that. Amazing. Um as far as the financial components, um we're doing really well. Um we are um under expended by about six, just shy of sixteen percent. Um I would be really nice to stay there. Um I think there are a couple more capital projects for the buildings that. Um in the coming year that we would like to be able to accomplish to bring. The buildings up to, you know, up to standards and and just a a great learning environment for the kids. Um we will start diving uh deep into the budget um in February and March. Um Josh and I will start having meetings with administration. Um we'll probably schedule those um mid to late February. Um we'll have some free things going out saying, um give us your needs, your wants. Um and what your priority of those items are. Um we have not heard, I have not heard um any um. Any rumblings of what our budget even um is gonna look like from the state. Um it's a little. Concerning, I I don't even say concerning, just a little unnerving because we have a new governor. Um obviously, people's mindset, well, the state's lost thirty, thirty thousand kids. Well, we can, we should be able to under, you know, adjust our budget for that. So I just, it's a little unnerving not knowing or not even hearing anything yet, so um. Uh once I have that number, I'll start putting that out there. Um and then, of course, Josh and I will be working very closely with admin to get the budget process going and the budget prepared. Um so with that, um budget committee members. Um ideally, it's a one-to-one, so for every board member, you have one budget committee member. Um it hasn't always been that way and that's okay, but it would be nice. If you could find a body to be your buddy for budget night. Um I don't know if we have that meeting set yet, but it's usually the first week of May.
I think we have an adopt calendar.
Yeah, I can look on my calendar too. It's usually the first week of May.
First week in May, usually.
Yeah.
First Monday.
Is that Monday or Tuesday?
Um. Sure.
Yeah.
Um I'm gonna look, because I do have things on my calendar, because that's what my life revolves around right now. Um. It is May first, um Monday, May first at six o'clock. Ideally, yeah. Ideally, um it's a one-nighter. Um.
Usually.
Usually, um I wouldn't like to say could guarantee that, but it all depends on the committee. So um I I try to make it very understandable. Um I spend a lot of time in the presentation. Um so that when it is presented, you do the board of the, and the budget committee, um it's very understandable. Um and very transparent, yeah. There is nothing that um that I do or on behalf of the district that isn't. I mean, I'm see-through, there, that, there's just. And I'm willing to answer any questions and any of that, so. Basically, I'm just making a plea for a one-to-one, if you have a buddy or a bu- a body that would be willing to come spend the evening with us.
When, would do they have to sign up ahead of time? Because I know for the town we do.
Yes.
Yes. April board meeting.
Because you gotta, the board has to actually appoint them.
Um you can do that the night of the of the budget committee. Um basically, because you come together as the board. Then you go to the budget committee. And yeah, and then, um so it could even be, as long as they've contacted Julie. And they filled out the application and or can be here on that Monday night. Okay, so that is my plea. Um. Other than that, that's all I have. Um does anybody have any questions? Yeah, Mr. Murphy?
Okay, on your front out, we're halfway done with the year.
Yes.
All right, we are about twelve percent under budget for salaries.
Yes.
And twenty percent under budget for benefit. Does it look like we will maintain that percentage?
Yes.
Okay. That'll be good for us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um there are still some positions that are budgeted for that will remain in the budget going forward that have not been hired to. And hence, that's the reason why you have that current gap.
Right.
Um we will continue to budget for those positions as they are. Uh needed positions, we just haven't been able to find the bodies to fill those positions.
Thank you.
Are you, are you gonna review the budget or is that what?
Um that page, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. I think it's like. Yeah.
It's new business.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Yeah.
And we, we're gonna do that later.
Yeah, it's a four point one.
Okay, Julie?
Yes, ma'am.
Site council, parent involvement report?
Yes, ma'am. So we had a meet, well, first off, I'm just gonna back up. We were okayed on our title one carryover. I'm still working on the title duet for a, but we're really close to that. And then we had an awesome parent involvement meeting tonight. Um and and came up with a new name, uh the Parent Involvement Group, the Pig Group. And we're gonna get a logo and we are going to um.
Really, I was joking when I said pigs, but we're going for it.
But but we had actual parents at the meeting tonight, which was really fun. And they love the idea, so they're going to create this logo and move forward with that. Anyways, so uh some of the ideas that everybody came up with is having a um an artsy fine art night. That might be just, might be art living museum, still need to work on that, but that'll be, um what did we decide in April?
April twenty, I'm pulling up the calendar right now, April twenty-six, I believe.
Yes, and then um the, our principal is going to do a pizza pancake with the principal, which will be um speaking. Having communication with parents and cooking pancakes or pizza at the same time. Um she's gonna be starting to work with lunch with the principal. February ninth, oh, and other ideas were parent resource library, parent, oh, we're the the pig group. And then.
February ninth at four P M, we're planning to have our next meeting while the kids are doing junior loggers, right?
Yep, yep. So moving forward, everybody was super duper, lots of brainstorming, lots of excitement and um. Re re what? Re re re. Yeah, we're. Yeah, we're redoing yourself.
Reinventing, reinventing, there you go.
Thank you, that was the word I was looking for, and it was not coming to my brain, obviously. So yes, moving forward, very excited, Mrs. Bray's awesome. And um the parents just have super duper ideas out there, and I'm excited to see what unfolds with it. The end.
It was a great meeting.
It was, thank you so much, Ms. Bray.
Yeah, that was awesome.
Thanks for the answer. I I actually, I almost texted you, but I knew you were. Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, so we are gonna go to three point eight, Butte Falls Community School Partnership, Mr. Murphy.
The preschool continues as it is. We are changing the way to, we're doing business with the food pantry, we're setting it up like a store. You will come in with a shopping cart, you will take your items off the shelf. You will lower to the curb, get the meat that you want. And then you will ru- work your way right out the door, the other door.
Awesome.
So uh.
They get only what they want that way, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
I like that.
We've set up major shelves that can handle the cases of food and that hand goods.
Good, that's awesome.
Is that it, Mr. Murphy? Thank you so much.
Um can I go on that? Angie um had messaged me going on to the dance. They do have some dresses over there, like for alone. Um I know she was.
Sixth grade went over there on Friday.
Actually, Audrey went.
And and I asked any seventh graders, so a handful of seventh graders, all the sixth graders went over there on Friday.
They they had a Audrey.
They did, they had a dress party.
Fun, yeah, she had a black.
Yes.
Okay, doing good things over there, I'm loving it.
Okay, so we are at three point nine, public comment.
I have no one contact me to speak to the board.
Okay. So four point O is old business, four point one is revised resolution. Uh twenty two dash eleven, adopting the budget.
But I think this is just a paperwork adjustment piece, but Rachel, you wanna speak to it real?
It is, um so I'm not sure if all of your glasses is in color. Um I am, I know it is, um but you can see that midway down the um down the page, it says revised total unappropriated reserve amounts. All funds, so I had put in five oh six, seven oh one instead of seven oh six, seven oh one. Uh the totals were correct, so everything came out correctly. It happened to do with um when O D E was going back. Against my numbers, they discovered that I had fat fingered. Um so we are just making um basically a documentation adjustment to make the. Uh resolution match the actual dollars that we've done, um so.
Actual unappropriated reserve amount.
Correct, yeah. So what was budgeted in the document was seven oh six, seven oh one. When I created this page, because it is a separate from the the full document, I had missed um printed and said five oh six, seven oh one. So O D he's, O D E just says I need an updated resolution with the correct number on it.
So you need a motion to approve the revised resolution number twenty two dash eleven, correct?
Yeah.
I will make a motion to approve revised resolution twenty two dash eleven. All in favor?
Rachel, on the on the first sentence up there, it says six point seven million. And then down below total appropriation, six point four, is that difference intentional? I don't need an answer now, I just. Point that out.
Um. It it's not that one that it should be, that six point seven should actually be the seven point oh one one four.
Okay.
We need to adopt it with an uh an update.
Uh yeah, and I will do and I will do a corrected document.
What did you catch there, Mark?
Yeah.
His number should pass that number.
Yes, so O D E did, yeah, the two stars should match.
I got it, got it, okay. So the total adopted budget number. And the be resolved number are not matching, and so we wanna.
Also include the re to align those with the figure seven million one hundred and fourteen thousand forty five dollars.
Make a motion to adopt the revised resolution twenty two eleven. With uh the number uh what's that, six million? Seven hundred fourteen thousand and forty five dollars to match the seven. Million one hundred and fourteen thousand and forty five dollars that work. Thank you, Mark. Because then she would have to come back to us again.
No, you perhaps come back again.
Back the motion. All in favor?
I.
I, thank you.
So so one other thing I'd like to point out on the on the budget, so that seven million is our. Budget for the year.
Total, yes.
Total budget for the year.
Yeah.
So with two hundred students, that's thirty five thousand dollars per student is what.
Thirty five thousand?
Yep, that's what this district consumes or spends per student to provide an education.
And that's to bring that to zero.
Right.
I mean, you have to ideally think that in order to maintain, you would actually only go up to the six point four.
Right, so it's six point four, it's thirty two thousand.
Yeah.
I did that number too, so. Pretty, pretty expensive education, so. Um like to think that they're getting their money's worth.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah.
And I will get an updated page. Sent to Julie.
And then so we're gonna go to four point two, integrated planning update.
Yes, at the December meeting, um I think even November, we had been telling you about the state process of bringing together a number of. Six major grant funding streams into one process. Where we talked to our community and all our stakeholders about how we're gonna use the funds and what do we, what are our priorities should be. Uh I'm here to update you today on that integrated planning process. We will be bringing you. The the final proposal in the spring, because we need for the board to look at it, and then it goes to the state. But this month, we will be doing s- uh student, parent and staff surveys electronically. And there's a series of questions in there to to draw information out that will help us identify what priorities emerge from those various groups. And that's part of the getting feedback and and communication piece. And some other things that will be happening over the next month and a half. Um we're gonna do some additional student interviews, individual student interviews. There's some. Just like get some more voice to that, because when you do a survey, you don't always get the whole, you know, well, here's here's what's important. And I believe that there um will be some, well, I think you talked about some parent meeting opportunities, Karina, what she's doing with the. Pizza pancake thingy, um you know, it's getting parents together to talk and 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 rebuild relationships and hear what people's concerns are. And I'm anticipating there'll be one or two other things, you know, last year in February, we did a listening, the board did a listening session. And I don't know if you guys are game for it or not, but we're in kind of a different place now than we were a year ago. It might be really good to set up an evening where we or to extend the board meeting and have the first hour or something like that, really. To give people an opportunity to come talk about what's what their concerns are. That would bring in people from the community who don't necessarily have kids, but live in this community and have an interest in our school. So I'm throwing that out to you, um the format we had last time, I mean, you guys listened, that it was a listening session. But we had some people put some things out that that actually helped us as we thought about our priorities, and the venue was a little different than. Just I'm sitting at my computer, complete the survey, so are you, are you all open to planning something like that, maybe late, mid or late February?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Good, okay.
We actually discussed this at our parent involvement meeting today, and we were actually talking about doing like a parent involvement listening session, but I. I still think that the board being there and being present and listening to the. The parents, the public, students, if they want to.
Yeah, and and it's a listening session, you don't have to engage or anything, because actually, sometimes when we engage, we change the discussion, and really, it's about what's on people's minds. And you know, we 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 aren't having the level of public comment at these meetings now, even they're open, but I think it's because this is an awkward time and. And people, you know, feel limited maybe in what they could say, or maybe they wanna come with their friends and share stuff, so, okay, all right, we'll we'll.
You guys wanna schedule that just now while we're here, and you're talking about doing it, February?
Yeah, could we do that on a Monday night?
Um we have a lot of basketball.
Okay, maybe.
A Friday night, Bonnie?
I don't know that you'll get this.
Oh, Karen, yeah.
Mondays and Wednesdays, but I mean, we could even do like a, um I mean, if we need to. And practice a little earlier, I'm sure that would be fine, or we could do it Tuesday or Thursday would work best. Um unless it's like the last week of February, we don't have any games.
February seventh, because that would be before our board meeting, if we had a listening session.
Well, it's a, it's a, that's seven through the eighth, but it's the second Tuesday, uh second Monday, it's the second Monday.
It looks like our board meeting is February thirteenth.
Right, you wanna do that, you wanna plan it as part of that and have a sort of a. Open public comments begin with, and we we say we'll listen for, uh we, I would say forty five minutes or an hour. And we just build the schedule that way. If we don't have enough people, then you just go into your board meeting, but if we do.
But do it like, would we do, wanna do it somewhere else?
Yeah, you probably, then then you could just hold your board meeting there, people could stay for the board meeting.
Like five thirty?
But we do have a a way.
Game's gonna draw.
There's a game at Royal Valley Venice Academy.
It's on a Monday, it's.
It's the, it's the thirteenth, yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's a girls' basketball game.
Well, then maybe we need to reboot and just look at Tuesday or Thursdays, and and let me look and see what's going on, the activity's scheduled, then I can kick a date out to you or Julie can. Okay, with, but if of those two, would Tuesdays be the first priority, Thursdays the second? Or vice versa, we're.
I like Tuesday.
Okay, okay.
I'm looking at February seventh, so.
Okay, all right, um. So so that's, that's just an update on the integrated planning and how we're trying to get more input from people. Um and then Julie, was there anything else I needed to say? She gave up on it.
I didn't give up on you. Uh the only other thing that we um are going to be doing is that we're going to be having um. I can't remember her name, but she's from S O E S D that's gonna help us do her um a needs assessment.
Okay, okay. All right, so that's, that's the update.
Okay, perfect. And you guys will get back to us about a date for the listening session.
Yeah.
So we're at five point O, new business, five point one, May sixteenth, special district election.
So I got a letter from uh Christine Walker, who's the county clerk. And in it, I have to give the county an update on who's, if we've had any changes on the board, so you are now an official public document. That you are our new board member, okay? That being said, the reason why they're asking also is because. Um we're up to, we have two positions that are open for the next election cycle. And I'm gonna lay, I'm gonna read these dates, because if anyone's listening or you say something, go look at the video if they want the information. Um the election is actually on May sixteenth, which is a little late for a May election, okay? It's a special district election, and that's where school boards have elections and a lot of like um water, uh you know, uh districts and all that. A lot of of some of those type of districts. If you uh are, if someone was interested in filing for a position, the two positions that are open are the one that Bonnie filled. Um which um she's completing the term of Steve Nelson, and he would have been stood for reelection if he was here. If he chose to do that, and then the other one is for Aaron, and I really appreciate Aaron has. Has served this board for quite some time, and he communicated that he actually has an interest in if he's gonna do anything, being a volunteer in a different way. But he is uh willing to complete his term through June. His position will be, it's an open position, there's no, there'll be no incumbent then, so those two positions will be the two that are up for election. If a person wanted to file for election, the county opens the window for filing on February fourth, and they close it on March sixteenth. That's two months before the election, so. So it's important, and and anyone who's interested, we certainly, if they come and Julie and we we can get the paperwork or whatever, but it's also available online. You file at Jackson County Courthouse, for those of you who run, you know what you gotta do. Um there's some minor fees, it's not not onerous, the cost. But there is also, if person wanted to have uh something put in, the voter's pamphlet about them and a picture of them and all that. That's a a process that occurs alongside it, and there are deadlines for that, and there's a fee, and the the fee's a little bit greater for that. So if a person wanted to find where this is, you can just Google Jackson County or uh elections, but there's a website here. It's a H T T P S uh colon forward slash four slash Jackson County or. That's all one word, Jackson County or dot org slash clerk slash election slash upcoming. Dash current dash election slash special dash election, so there you go. I read it, it's in the record. But if you just Google Jackson County uh clerk, you can get the information.
Or Jackson County election.
Yeah, probably that would work also, yeah. So I wanted to make sure that was, that was on the record here.
You have the position numbers.
I was curious.
Julie, Julie, Julie will hunt those down.
It's position three and position four.
Those are the two coming up.
Yep. Those are the two coming up. And it's for a four year term, is what it is, for your commitment. All right, so that's all I have on that.
Thank you, Doctor Long. Um I think we're right back to you, five point two, planning for the next year.
Okay, I mentioned briefly, and I just wanted to put it out there a little more publicly and get some direction from you. Um there has been a a. Uh an interest expressed for several years by some of our employees and families about frustration. They love that we're a four day a week school, but more and more doctors and dentists. Work Monday through Thursday, and they aren't available on Friday, which is the day we're off. The district interested in this is, as it's gotten harder and harder to get substitute teachers. When our employees need to take their kids to the dentist or the doctor for regular appointments. They're having to take time off work, which means we don't have the person that we hired to serve kids, we have to get a substitute, but if we can't get a substitute. Then we end up covering it other ways, and it really is not the optimum for what we wanna have happen in classrooms, so. What I in in proposing is that we, as a separate process from all the other stuff we're doing. That we get some input via a select specific survey from our our parents, our students, our staff. And our community around that issue. The question is. Should we change our Monday through Thursday, Friday to a Tuesday, I mean, Monday through Thursday, one to a Tuesday through Friday. Schedule, which would then allow people access to doctors and dentists more and have fewer kids out of school potentially. And our staff here more. Um it does impact families, because many people have been able to adjust their work with their boss. So they're working Monday through Thursday while their kids are in school. The school does provide that childcare component too for families, when your kids, particularly a four day week. So I I I'm I'm throwing that out to you, I wanted to give you the rationale. Um there's one other school that has made this shift already. And I just talked with them briefly, but I didn't wanna go further than that, and that is the Rouge Community School. They are a Tuesday through Friday school. The Three Rivers School District this last year changed to a four day a week school uh 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 district. That is, they go Monday through Thursday. I have a staking suspicion that there may be other districts looking at this, and so if we can find any others, we can also do research around that. But I just think it's, we're small enough, we should just ask the question of our parents and our staff and and our kids.
Is that something you're planning on including in the survey?
No, I kinda wanna keep it separate, because I think it is, has. It has to do specifically with meeting the needs around uh appointments, medical and all of that. And minimizing the impact on our staffing, and I'm afraid that it will either. Get shut it off to the side of the survey or become the flashpoint when we need different types of input. So I would see that going out as a separate communication targeted, and probably would reference it in my February newsletter with a link. And um and and just be a very narrow focus with a place for people to also give comment, you know, write comment.
Well, I would just make sure to get like a pretty thorough survey on this, because I. I have, I have some kids with like special needs, and so. You're probably gonna come across as many doctors offices, other types of offices that are closed as often on Mondays, it's Fridays, so I'm curious.
Okay.
Statistically where we are on that.
That's, that's a fair question.
Or the parents in particular, well, and.
I I think we will hear from parents if that's the case, which is why asking the parents, asking the parents, and remember, our staff are also parents. Yeah, tho- those that are affected by that. We just are trying to look for ways to reduce absenteeism and have our employees present to serve kids too. And have our kids here.
Sounds like the whole world's gone to a four day work week.
It feels that way, doesn't it?
Except for you.
I haven't done the one, you know.
Doctors and dentists, I I relate to that, it's frustrating.
Yep, okay, so I we will proceed with that then, I'm I got a sort of a direction with, you didn't need to give me a, take a vote on it, I guess, yet. Which you're just saying, okay, check it out, so there we go.
Perfect. Okay, so six point O is personnel, six point one, hire the middle school wrestling coach.
Ted Birdseye has been a coach for us for several years, and he is the person that we are, that he's already on the job. I'm really here to notify you of this, because I don't think you actually take action on on, actually, you do on these. Now, but I said that because it's an extra comp position in the teacher contract. So I need the formality of you approving the hiring of. So I need the formality of you approving the hiring of Ted's bird sign, if you don't, I don't know what I'm gonna do.
I make a motion, um, to rehire Ted Birdseye for the current year's, um, wrestling coach position. All in favor?
I.
I.
Thank you.
Aaron should be there. Okay, so seven point O, uh, comments for their agenda items from the board.
I got one more thing.
Okay, Rachel.
I have to apologize to you guys.
Are we back at the resolution?
Yeah, ignore that resolution, cause. I am not even sure right now what I did.
Wrong district.
To act, she would to rescind.
Rescind, okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to rescind. Our, our second adoption of revised resolution twenty two dash eleven.
Thank you.
Just one of those here.
I have to do bookkeeping for the town, so it's. Something I would do.
I don't know what I've done, but I will get it fixed.
Thank you, Rachel. Okay, so now we're gonna go back to comments for their agenda item from board.
Don't think I have any.
Aaron, do you have anything?
I don't have much, um, I thought Ben gave us a real good briefing on the N R C, so I enjoyed that.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Okay, when you were at the meeting with the regional representatives. Did they say anything about the one billion dollar shortfall of the next biennium?
Actually, that is the back, the back channel talk, they didn't, they didn't speak, the, the, the four people were there to listen. Yeah, to listen, but that is one of the other underlying concerns out there, that revenue is projected to drop in the state. One of the blessings we have that from the last time we had an economic downturn is that we have been filling a bucket for. A rainy day fund for schools. And, and it's supposed to really be for a rainy day, and I don't know that a billion dollar drop. As, dealing with that problem is the rainy day, because there may be other things they have too. But I know that's one of the stressors on. State budget, we've been, you know, you all know, we've been seeing excess revenues for several years, those kicker, there'll be another kicker check next year. Even with a billion losses in revenue. So, um, they didn't, that wasn't brought up. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, the, the legislators from Southern Oregon, every other week, once the set, the legislatures in session. Have a sort of a standing meeting with superintendents of the area, we can get on the phone or on a, a Zoom and, and they ask us questions and things, so. I, I probably will be involved in those this year, last year, it wasn't as big of a deal, cause it was the middle of the biennium. But they, that has been a very effective tool for regionally for school districts, but, but let them know how impacts on us. Yeah, comments?
Is that it?
Yeah, good, thank you.
Okay, so I just wanted to, like I normally do, thank our administration and our staff for their amazing hard work. And dedication to the students, thank you, um, Rachel and Josh, just for being here tonight. And, um, I got really excited during our parent involvement meeting, so I highly encourage any parents listening. To get involved with, um, our parent involvement meeting that we're planning to do, I think it was February ninth. Get ahold of Mr. DeCarlo, if you're interested in helping at the N R C. Or possibly future concessions, so, um, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, everyone, have a good evening.
Do we have to officially adjourn, cause Julie said no last time?
Oh, I don't want to stare. You can just gamble, so.